Welcome to the Bothell City Council's special meeting. Is this a special, oh, it is a special meeting, October 30th, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all council members are here. Meeting agenda approval, is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into visitor comments, and then I read my little script here. You think I've memorized this by now. Okay. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And I do have a sign-up sheet. Kelly Atkinson. Coop the podium.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Atkinson, I'm a member of the Bothell Arts Commission, and I had a couple of things I wanted to bring you up to date about. First, the living wall. It was brought to the attention of the Bothell Arts Commission that the city council has decided to replace the living wall located in the lobby of City Hall as a cost-saving measure. It was suggested that a permanent art installation could be a consideration. The Bothell Arts Commission has already reviewed some options, and we'd be delighted to help in any way we can. The second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, Bothell Arts Commission is pursuing one of the creative consultancy grants offered by the arts organization for culture. These grants will be awarded in December this year. If Bothell were to be selected, we would be partnered with a creative consultant in 2019. That consultant would guide us in developing a comprehensive arts and cultural plan. The process of developing this plan would include input from many segments of our community, and would result in a vibrant plan for artistic, cultural, and economic growth. Dana McGee, the tourism manager for Bothell, recognized this opportunity and brought it to the attention of the Bothell Arts Commission and has been organizing the application process, and we will keep you posted with any news. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment? Go once, twice, okay, moving on. New business? So, I guess it is, is it new business? All right. AB 18-159, "Presentation of the City Manager's Recommended 2019-2020 Biennial Budget." Do I open a public hearing, or is that the next one? Okay. You have the floor, City Manager.
Thank you very much. So, tonight I am presenting you with a balanced budget for 2019-2020, the biennium budget. And first, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the council for your patience, and your interest, and all of your excellent questions as we went through a little over 11 hours of study session for the budget. We learned a lot. I really appreciate the staff, the work that went into putting this budget together, most notably, I want to do a shout-out for the Finance Department, just an amazing group of people, just really appreciate all their hard work. But really, this is a team effort. This comes together with a lot of hard-working people, talented people, department heads and their staff who know their departments, they know the services and programs they're delivering, and know their budgets, and were able to bring forward a very comprehensive budget that I hope that you have confidence in, and that can deliver your programs and services and your policy direction to our great community in the next two years ahead. So, just a thanks to everyone involved in this, especially the council, and the time that you've spent with us going through the initial proposed budget. So, I just want to do a real quick recap. We did spend some time together. I mentioned this when we did our budget study sessions, just the budget process, so if someone's stepping in new to the process tonight. We've been working on this since the beginning of 2018, and there's a lot that goes into this preparation. During the budget study session, that's when we presented the draft proposed budget to you in October, and the blue circle shows the council direction, and that's such a critical part of this process, and you provided us with solid policy direction to be able to balance this budget and bring it to you as a proposed budget. So, tonight on October 30th, that's what we're doing, is we're presenting you with this proposed budget. We'll be coming back to you in November 27th in a public hearing to present the final proposed budget for your consideration and adoption. We continue to have the challenge that I talked about during the budget study sessions, we do have a structural deficit. Our expenses exceed our revenues, and that trend is projected to continue. And so, I did receive policy direction to fill the budget gap for 19 and 20, and we were able to do that effectively and still deliver programs and services to our community, but it is something that we do need to continue to work on, and I have some strategies at the end that I would like to propose and look at in 2019. So, how do we do it? So, there were some things that council approved or directed to be part of this budget. That was additional revenue that's been included, so the $828,000 we had designated towards the Park at Bothell Landing Pedestrian Bridge. We believe that it was a good risk to take that and put it towards our operations. That was $828,000. We included the proceeds of the sale from the Civic Center parcel. Since we have the cost of repurchase sitting in the budget, we added in the cost of the sales, so they would balance each other out. And then we also included the Lot A sale proceeds for just a little over $3.1 million. I just want to point out that we're using one-time capital funds to balance an ongoing general fund deficit. So, this is one of those, we talked about this during the budget study sessions, this is a challenging time for Bothell. This is not a good financial strategy, and it's one of the reasons we need to look at our long-term financial strategy. But it will work for 1920, but we cannot continue to use one-time monies to pay for ongoing expenses. Some other things that we included in this budget that will be coming before you in the near future, you asked us to consider an ordinance for the right-of-way permit use for dockless transportation. We'll be working on that and bringing it to you in early 2019. There will be some revenue generation with that, but because it's speculative and you haven't approved the ordinance, that revenue is not in the budget, but it is, will be additional general fund revenue for the city. The fee study is underway, and we'll be bringing that to you on December 4th. That includes the proper credit card fee program that you also directed us to include, and so you'll have the opportunity to consider that on December 4th. We also included a utility tax audit for $20,000. We included the expense, but the revenue we won't see until 2020. And again, we didn't include that revenue because it would be speculative, and we don't know how much revenue we would recover from that audit. Additional expenses that we included in the general fund proposed budget at council direction was, we included the volunteer coordinator position, again, because that's one of those positions that has a huge rate of return, as well as the Economic Development Officer, we included that for one year, a limited-term position. Again, another position that has rate of return. We fully funded the asset replacement, that was an additional $875,000 on top of what was already budgeted. We included the fleet mechanic proposal at a total increased cost of $59,000, and I have some more information available in the next slide for you. And we included the utility tax audit consultant, that's about $20,000. That's one utility, we have several, but we thought we'd start with one, see what that looked like, what the process was like, and see if we generate additional revenues from that, and that would be something we could consider to either add in 2020 as a budget amendment, or look at in '21, '22 in that budget. This is the fleet allocation comparison. We didn't have this available for you, but you directed us to include it in the budget. What I highlighted in sort of the yellowish is our proposal to add the two positions and reclassify one person, and we really feel that this is adequate staffing for our current fleet that would then also include maintenance of our fire apparatus. And what I'm showing you is the difference between the proposal and our current status quo, and cost increases will go into the utility funds and other funds, but the most important number that impacts our general fund reserve is the $59,358. So, that's the total cost increase of this new program to the general fund. And so, that's what I've included in the general fund budget, and I wanted to highlight that for you. So, our budget is balanced. $277 million on all revenues and all expenditures. Now, this is where budget and accounting start to cross, and so, some of these numbers get complicated because it's the way that they're presented as a result of GFOA guidelines and accounting standards. Overall, this is our total budget. Now, we're not going to spend this amount of money because it includes some of our reserves, but this is the number that shows that we have a balanced budget, and we meet the law requirements of having a balanced budget that's presented to the council prior to November 1st, and also the budget that you would adopt with any potential changes from tonight at the end of November. So, the good news is we have a balanced budget. I'm just going to briefly go over a couple of charts, these are all in the budget document that was uploaded this morning. So, this is revenue for all funds, so you can see about $226, almost $227 million come into the city, are expected to come into the city between 2019 and 2020. And that's it in pie charts, you've got to get a sense of which percentages. Obviously, you can tell our property tax, sales tax, and utility tax are some of our larger revenue generators, along with our charges for services and our local grants and entitlements. General fund revenues, we anticipate about $107 million in general fund revenues in the next two years. And this is how it's broken down, so again, you can see property tax, sales tax, utility tax are very important revenue generators for being able to deliver the level of service that we do to our community. Also wanted to show you, some individuals always ask, "Now, where does my property tax go?" And this is a chart we've shown you before, this is for King County on a $500,000 house. Residents pay about $5,500. And you can see that only just less than 15% of the property taxes paid by residents come to the city of Bothell. You can see how it's distributed among other agencies for use of the property taxes. And in Snohomish County, the actual amount paid is a little bit less, just under $5,000. The city of Bothell is just a little over 16% of that. And if anybody's interested for sales tax, and then around 10% that you pay in sales tax, we get .08% of that, so .08 cents on the 10 cents go to the city of Bothell. So, we are not, that is a very small percentage, so when you buy something and you think your sales tax bill is high, remember we're getting less than 1% of that 10% or 10 cents. All funds by expenses, so you can see the $245 million. This doesn't, now, this is where the accounting comes into play, so you would think that the amount of revenues that I showed you coming in, the $226 million, would balance with $245 million. It doesn't because of transfers and how the money is used and shifted between accounts. So, the overall, again, the overall budget is balanced, but our expenditures are higher, but there's reasons behind that. But this is our overall expenditures for the entire budget for the two years, and this is by fund, so you can see where it's going, so sources that it goes to, so general government, public safety, some category breakdowns, so you can see how we're spending the money. And this is by department, division, so it's broken down, so you can see each department. Obviously, police and fire, our public safety are a little over, almost 50%, a little more than 50% of our total budget. It's an important investment, and we certainly understand that, so, and you can see the other divisions and departments. And there's a pie chart that shows that breakdown, so you can see by percentage. And then again, broken down by the general government and public safety, you can see how we're using our general fund, how we're spending our general fund monies. Hopefully, you've become familiar with this chart, so this tells us how we're doing with our general fund reserve. So, we start at $10.5 million at the beginning, at the end of our current biennium, and by what we spend and by what we bring in, we have gotten it down to a $600,000 deficit, which is now coming from the general fund reserve, and we anticipate ending the year at about $10 million. That's an 18% general fund reserve. This is the chart, I shared this several times through the budget study sessions, so we're really only looking at 2019 and 2020. So, you can see that we've kept our general fund reserve up because we're not dipping into it just a bit, but because we haven't addressed the ongoing years, this is fully funding the asset replacement through 2024, so you can see that we still have some challenges ahead, and that's why we need a longer-term financial strategy to be able to address these things. Some expenditure highlights, you have a capital facilities plan, we plan to spend about $70 million in 19 and 20. This includes the utility-funded projects as well, and we'll have a public hearing on November 13th where staff will be presenting the capital facilities plan to the council for your adoption. The asset replacement, assets, we have all of the assets listed in the budget document that plan to be replaced in 2019 and 2020. Those are on page 181. So, we've had some discussion over the last two years about how that asset replacement works, and all of it is there for you to see, and your adoption of this budget basically gives us direction to move forward and adopt, and to purchase those assets. As a reminder, we're very thoughtful about the assets that we purchase, and just because it's on the list, we don't automatically replace it. We look at everything, we make sure that it needs to be replaced, is there an opportunity to extend the useful life of an asset? And then sometimes, the assets die earlier than we expected, and so we might have to replace something earlier than we expected, and we work to try to extend the useful life of some things if they're continuing to function well. We certainly try to do that. So, it's not an automatic replacement, and I think that's very important for the council and the community to understand. Another highlight is total staff, it's a 1% increase. Basically, we're increasing by four and a half positions, so we've kept it very, very lean. Two of those positions are for the mechanics that you've asked us to include, and the other two positions are the ones that you directed us to include, and that is the Economic Development Manager for one year, and the Volunteer Coordinator for two years. So, that's the only increases in staff that we have in this budget. We've tried very hard to keep it very lean. The financial strategy, I feel very strongly that we need to look at a financial strategy, we need to look at the general fund reserve, the asset replacement fund, we need to focus our efforts on selling Lot D. We need to identify funding sources for the sports fields, that's very concerning for me. We have two turf replacements coming up, there are a million each, plus a high desire to replace, to add turf to the fourth field at a cost of $2 million. That's $4 million that would be coming up in 2021, 2022, and so we need to look at a strategy of how we can pay for that, to adopt and to develop and adopt some financial policies, and again, to consider additional revenues as we move forward, and that is sort of encompassing a longer-range financial strategy to ensure our stability and our ability to deliver services. You've seen this list before, just as a reminder, these are some of the items that I'd like to bring back in the months ahead for you to consider as we develop that financial strategy. The next step is tonight for you to consider this proposed 2019-2020 biennial budget. If you have any additional direction to me, to provide that to me this evening, the entire ELT is here to answer any additional questions you might have about our budget. We would then bring back a final proposed budget on November 27th, so between now and then, November 1st through the 20th, we'll finalize this document and all the numbers, double-check all the numbers. You can adopt it on that evening, or you could continue the public hearing for further discussion to December 4th and adopt it on that evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the team is here as well.
Great, thank you. Questions from council? Then, what happens when you talk about it for 11 hours straight? So, I have a couple. One of them being, we talked a little bit about a sustainability coordinator, and I briefly talked with the city manager to see if there's any way we could fund that through the solid waste fees, so we get a fee back from Recology that funds, we could use to fund additional help, and I, for two reasons. One, if people watch Game of Thrones, winter's coming when it comes to recycling and solid waste management for cities. There's, China's no longer accepting recyclables, basically, and the, we've got a situation on our hands, and so I would hate to go into 19 and 20, assuming that's not going to consume some level of effort to try to increase the city's game, basically, and how we educate the community about recycling and what goes in which bins, and it's a lot of work that's coming very soon. And the other one is that we hear a lot about banning different materials, one being plastic bags at grocery stores or in general, and others, you know, takeout food, making sure that those containers are actually recyclable, compostable, and those issues are coming to a head. A lot of cities, I think, somewhere around the 24 different cities in western Washington have already moved forward with banning plastic bags or banning them at, you know, by the end of this year, so, to build some capacity, because we have one full-time, is she even full-time employee that does solid waste? Frankly, I just don't think that's enough, and if we have the ban with, within the, it's not a general fund expense, it's an expense that comes out of the solid waste fund, I'd like to, to council to consider adding that position. I don't know if you guys want to talk about that now, but I've got a whole another one too I wanted to bring up. You guys want to talk about that now? No? Yeah? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. So, what I'm looking at when we talk about the sustainability coordinator, and also, I'll save the "also" for later, is that if we're going to have someone for two years, correct? Then do we have some goals outlined for them within that two years so that we can kind of monitor that?
Well, we would. It's not in the budget, so we don't now, but if the council would like to add the position, then that, absolutely.
Right, then there would be the goals, all right. And then I have one other question. So, in the budget, when I look at recycling and sustainability, I also see that the general, no, facility rental is 500%. And what is facility rental?
We'll have to look that up. I believe those are fees associated with special events, so for example, when we have a booth at the farmer's market at Country Village, for example, we need to pay a fee. So, I believe it's 500%, but I believe the dollar amount is fairly small.
Okay, so I hope when I do, when we do our market at Bothell Landing, they will also have a booth. No, I'm just, looking to the future. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that.
So, you'd be supportive of the sustainability coordinator if we outline some goals?
Yes, with good goals in place that we can measure.
Okay. Mr. Agnew? Councilmember Agnew, okay, he's interested. Definitely?
I'm definitely interested. I've had a number of people come talk to me, and we've had people at council meetings talk about a plastic bag ban, and I think what's important for people to understand is, it directly relates to what you will be charged in the future for solid waste disposal. We know that the landfill is nearly full, and the options are limited as far as what we can do. We can train it out, or they can build a really expensive incinerator, which would have impacts on air quality. So, we're not, we're not talking about this just for fun, it actually has real measurable impacts on everybody in Bothell's life. So, I'm in full support of that, that position.
Anybody else want to chime? We have a majority there, but do you want to keep going? Anybody else have anything to say about it?
Just that I'm in support of it, I think it is an upcoming problem, and if we can position ourselves to be ahead of it, or, you know, understanding it better and getting education out there earlier, earlier is better, in my opinion, so I think coordinator would be good with the well-defined goals.
Good deal? You're good deal? Okay. All right, so my second one. So, the media sometimes gets things wrong, but what I understand is that ARCH, ARCH is an organization of multiple cities in the area. We pay into an annual fee to, you know, fund the machine, and then we also pay an additional amount of money towards a trust fund, and the trust fund's used to actually buy properties somewhere within the Puget Sound region, or buy it, or some does something with it, that they build affordable housing. And recently, on the media, there's been, well, the one that's just deafening is the one that a couple of high-ranking city or state employees were using one as a rental, and they make quarter million plus a year. So, probably a very unusual circumstance for ARCH, they have a lot of properties, but it just gave me enough pause to see if the council was interested in not pulling the funding from the trust fund, but to have them come here and explain to us what's going on, so we don't approve those funds going to the trust fund at the moment. But keep in mind, our budget, we can authorize it at a future time to go into the trust fund, but it just, I'm just uncomfortable, I guess, just at the moment, according to the media, but once again, can get things inaccurate, but I just, I just would like to hear their side of it first before I am comfortable with it being in our budget. Anybody want to talk about that? Councilmember Zorn?
I'm with you on that. I just want to add that when I was on Planning Commission and we had ARCH before us, I greatly appreciate the skillset that they brought to us in figuring out the language for affordable housing, but one of the questions that I asked them at the time was, how do, you know, how do you safeguard this being abused? And they were confident that they had everything in place so that it wasn't abused. Clearly, we need an explanation. The other thing that gives me pause of just giving them a check, very loosely gripped for going into the trust, is, we're not necessarily guaranteed that those, whatever they build will be close to alleviating pressure for Bothell and bringing affordable housing close to us. And then the other, it's in the greater east side area that they would be buying affordable housing, which is great, but I really, as far as Bothell goes, I want to take care of our own people. And, I mean, that's the number-one priority in affordable housing, is taking care of affordable housing for our own people. The one point that they made was, is that they have a very, they don't have the buying power that a developer would have, and so, I want to hold tight on that check going into the trust with an explanation of what's going on, because whatever Bothell money that we have to go towards affordable housing, I really want dedicated top priority for benefiting the people of Bothell. So, having ARCH come before us and tell us what's going on, I really need to hear.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yeah, thank you. So, just to clarify, are we saying that we're going to set aside money for affordable housing, but not release those funds without council approval in the future?
So, I think it's, what is it, $57,000 per year, $47,000 per year that we have budgeted now?
Fifty, twice, so $100,000 over the two years for the parity contribution to the trust fund.
So, yeah, it's budgeted now, so I'm recommending we leave it in the budget, but we ask them to come and ask that we have the option to authorize it after they come and present to us about kind of what's happened here, and like how unusual this is or not, and what they're doing to make sure it doesn't happen again, that type of thing.
Okay, so the council would vote, be voting on that before it's?
Right. Well, we'd authorize it in the budget, but with the caveat that we want to approve it.
Prior to it being distributed?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I'm in support of that.
Okay. Anybody else want to chime in on this one? It's a touchy deal, because ARCH has been a really, really, really good partner to the city, so.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you bringing it up, and I think an explanation would be great. I know that they do a lot of good work, maybe they needed to put some more safeguards in place, but I don't think that negates the work that they do. So, I think having an explanation, giving them an opportunity to tell us what they plan to do is the right thing.
Everybody else good over there? Okay. All right, is there anything else anybody wants to change? Modifications? That just goes, no, there we go, Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, and I know that we also have the economic development, I always say the wrong word here. Sorry?
Manager.
Manager, that is in the budget as well, and I know also that, and I've said this before, that we need to kind of outline what we expect to see within that one year, so we can monitor that as well.
Well, I got to do my accolades, because I didn't at 10:30 at night the other night, but I just wanted to say I've been through this, I don't know how many times now. An amazing amount of information was given to the council compared to all other times, basically added up and then some, so I think it was a really interesting experience. The one thing I did think that might be a good thing going forward was for the council to pull out all the stuff, the things that are basically unmovable, unless you want to lay people off, I mean, we can look at that too, but just kind of take that out of the discussion, just look at the rest of it, for each of the line items, because I think that would help us kind of understand where things are kind of going up or down outside of salaries and benefits, because again, there's not a whole lot of control over that. But yeah, I just, I just really appreciated the transparent process, I just think it's super important that the council was informed that in the years past, there was a budget that was kind of thrown on the table, and if, they said, "That's it." And if you asked if there was something, you wanted something different, they'd be, the response would be, "Great, if you want to add that, find the money somewhere from the dais." the dais to take away to fund it. And of course, nobody, I don't know if we have, I don't think we ever did that. Keep looking over at Tom, but you just didn't, because it was just like, you really want us on the back of a horse without a saddle over here, just winging it. So I just really appreciate the amount of time and effort that was put into this budget and giving us the opportunity to really understand the finances of the city. It was super useful for me, so thank you, and all the staff too. Appreciate it. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And so I kind of spent my day looking at kind of percentage of increases in all of our different departments. And if I was going to kind of summarize, and I know it doesn't amount to a lot of dollars, but I would say overtime, out-of-state travel, business meals, you know, anytime we can cut back on those kind of issues, and I think it's really important, because it isn't a lot of money. But in human resources, on our overtime, it was 684% increase. So if we can just think about kind of freezing those kinds of things, or at least only offering them when they are essential services, I think that's important.
Thank you.
I got to jump on that one. Just so, so what I understand happened in this count, this process, now, these documents are online, so anybody can go look at them. The staff in the past have been given 3% for each line item to raise, which I can just tell you, it makes no sense, because there's, sometimes you don't need any money, sometimes you need less money in a certain line item, but you, you would take the 3%. Because, well, at the end of the day, you really, adds up to your grand total for your actual, your revenue, your, it's an MBU, I don't know what that stands for, but, so this was the first time, and I don't think you'll ever see those kind of percentage increases again on council or any council for that matter, as long as they're shared with us, because I think all the budgets actually started to represent actual expenses, instead of it being a 3% per year, or per biennium increase that, or 3% or 1%, whatever it was for that year. So that's part of why the percentages were so awkward. But they're useful, because that definitely draws your attention to them. But yeah, like a 684% increase wasn't because they're going to do 684% more overtime or whatever it was, it's just that there was no money there, obviously, before, and they needed some, that kind of thing. Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I also brought that up as a concern, but I feel confident in the response that I was given, that most of, again, it was reallocating kind of things were in the wrong categories, but also that most of, most if not all of that training is essential training. And so I'm confident that they're doing what they need to do to keep up on the latest, that they need for their professional development and growth and requirements, which I have to do continuing yet, so I understand that. So I'm comfortable with it now. I had the same question, though, in the beginning.
Anybody else? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. I'll just make a comment. I want to echo what the mayor said about all the hard work that was put into this budget. I deal with budgets all day long, and this by far is the most information that I've had to digest and review and go through. But going through the process makes you fully understand what it takes to run a city. And I think that now, now that we've been through this process, I think that we have a huge opportunity now to go out and seek funds regionally to help us with our parks, the streets, and other things that we're going to need here at home. So while the budget may be balanced, I think that the job has just begun for us to go out and work regionally and bring more dollars back into our community to help improve our community in the areas that we're not funding this year. So, but thank you to the, everybody who put all the hard work in.
Councilman Agnew?
I too would like to echo the mayor's sentiment that this by far has been the most enlightening budget that I've been on since I've been on council, and I think I have the tenure up here. We had more information on this budget and in this budget, and more explanations about this budget. And I just cannot say and thank staff enough for their hard work and their dedication to the citizens of the city.
You guys good? I love the newbies. Nothing? Councilmember, there you go. Councilperson Wilson?
I'll just say that this was my first budget experience, so you set the bar really high. So, I mean, everyone else had these experiences that they can relate to, but I thought it was very informative. Lots of information is just explained and just easy to understand, great graphics, lots of color. And so I appreciated it, and it made the first experience for me very positive and easy to digest.
Councilmember Zorn?
Okay, fine, I'll add my thank yous. But to just echo, no, I don't want to echo what they said, I just want to say what they said. I think you guys know that we really appreciate you, and ultimately, the people of Bothell are going to appreciate you, especially as, you know, the rubber of life starts hitting the road, and we need to get traction to move forward and become a very solid, more grounded city. This is going to matter a lot, so thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor forgot to say thank you.
Sorry. Sorry. Well, and I'm a little afraid to speak, because the last time I spoke, I got a little choked up, so. But I just want to say thank you again. I appreciated the really, I hate to use the word blunt, but blunt honesty about the situation that we're in, because I think it was a hard truth, but it's one that we have to contend with, and you can't unless you know what it is. So I appreciate that, and I know that staff worked really hard. So thank you once again for all of your time and effort.
Should we do another round of thank yous?
No. Thank you very much.
So this budget will come back for a public hearing on?
November 27th.
Okay, and then we could approve it that night, or we could move it to?
You could continue it to the 4th of December.
Okay.
But you have, you can approve it on November 27th.
Which is my birthday, by the way.
All right.
I'll be here to pass the budget, just in case. All right, Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And I may have missed this in the beginning, but you talked a little bit about the asset replacement fund deficit. And I'm sorry, but I lost track of how we're moving forward with that.
So it's fully funded for 19 and 20, with careful eye over the next two years of what we actually need to purchase. And then we need to look at a strategy. We don't have a strategy to fund it in the out years, and the four big things that I highlighted were the replacement of two turf fields and the addition of one new turf field, which is $4 million just for those four, and everything else that's in there.
So in 2019 and 2020, what are we allocating for the replacement fund?
There's, on page 181, there's a full list of everything, from every department, every division, everything that's, can be purchased in 19 and 20 from the asset replacement fund.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McAuliffe, you want to do a motion adjourned? Or somebody else can, if you don't want to.
I moved it weird, Jim.
Second. Moved by Councilmember McAuliffe, second by Councilmember, I'm going to go with Agnew on that one. That's close, though. Any discussion on the motion? Oh, we're just handvoting? To go home, raise your hand, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned.